So, call to orders, West Fargo Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. Second order of business is the approval of the minutes from May 11th. It's been moved and seconded to approve as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post same sign? Which pass? Agenda item number three is public hearing. A 21-19 Brooks Division subdivision and conditional use permit for a non-farm, single-family residential dwelling on the parcel in northwest corner of Section 24 Township 140 North, range 50 west, Cass County, North Dakota, Hanky Barnes.
Thank you, commissioners. The property is located in the city's extraterritorial ET area, about two miles northwest of West Fargo. Part of the parcel is located outside of West Fargo ET, however, but the portion being planted is located within the ET area. The proposed use of a non-farm, single-family dwelling is considered a conditional use within City of West Fargo ordinances within the agricultural district, subject to the property being planted. Conditions for approval for a lot size of less than 40 acres are if the surrounding quarter-quarter section or legal lot record is deed restricted to prevent further development until the area is annexed and city services are extended to the area. The property that's being planted tonight is about nine and a half acres. The surrounding 30 acres of land will be deed restricted to prevent further development. The property is located east of current alignment of the proposed Fargo Moorhead flood diversion. The area is within the special flood hazard area of Zone A, however, a preliminary flood map has been released which indicates that most of the area will be removed from the S H A Zone A area and placed within flood zone X. Um, access, uh, oops, sorry, I kind of got mixed up there. So, within your packet, there's an excerpt from the conditional letter of map provision jurisdiction map, which predicts a 100-year apothec completion of the proposed Fargo Moorhead flood diversion, and it shows the general location of the area being planted. Access of at times flooding is necessary and the applicant should provide sufficient evidence prior to final consideration by the city commission. Access is available at 1% chance flood event in the area. A conditional use permit agreement is required to be signed prior to issuance of the building permit and may include conditions deemed appropriate by the commission. Property owners within 350 feet, Raymond Township officials, Cass County planning, and the Cass County Sanitarian were all no sign. The only comments we received were from the Cass County Sanitarian, which indicated that any property will require onsite setting must have at least one acre total area, be located outside of the floodway, and have ample setbacks for wells, open bodies of water to place the system. The suburban restricted growth sector includes areas between the current and proposed diversion that may have new development potential should the next new diversion be built. G1 area identifies significant tracts of land that are currently rural, but where directed well and new development could occur around identified potential future mixed use and employment centers. It is recommended from city staff that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that it is consistent with city plans and ordinances, with recommended conditions of approval as follows: that the applicant provides sufficient evidence prior to final consideration by the city commission, that access to the site is available at a 1% chance flooding event in the area; to assign deed restriction as approved by city attorney, city planner, and city commission be received; to sign conditional use permit agreement as received; to adjournment plan as received and approved by the city engineer; to find an attorney title opinion of the City of West Fargo as perceived; to sign final plat as received within any necessary events; to seven, a certificate is received showing taxes are current. Before turning this over to commissioners to talk about, I did have two points that I wanted to touch on. So, for the plat right now, I believe there's a 33-foot right-of-way that's listed on the plat. It would be staff's recommendation to change that 33 feet to a 75-foot additional right-of-way. And then, there have been some conversations, I believe Commissioner Walker emailed me earlier today asking about what we use for best data with the city, whether it's the 2018 CLOMER or the 2015, which is the actual flood plan map. Usually what we do is we use, and previously on a past application, we used both the 2015 and the 2018 just to make our decision, but we can leave that up for further discussion too amongst you commissioners. I'm here for any questions, and then applicants are also here if there's any questions that you have for them.
Thank you. So, clarification on your first point, 33-foot right-of-way, has to be changed to a 75-foot?
That would be our recommendation, so on the other side of the road there, I believe it's 75 feet, so that would just be matching what's on.
So, that would have to be an eighth condition?
Yep. I believe the 33 feet, and correct me if I'm wrong, is mandated by state statute?
So, is that an inconsistency then? I'll take any comments from the public if somebody wishes to input, and as a note, if you are going to comment, please come up to the podium, let us know who you are, your address, and proceed. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, close that door.
Just to give me a point of classification, I guess what I was asking is if the city has officially adopted the preliminary map as available data, I appreciate and I that in the past and that you continue to provide the current adopted map and any preliminary data for consideration, in this case, it gets even more complicated because they also have a CLOMER to look at, so we have three different sets of possible data associated with this property. But occasionally, when a jurisdiction is confident in a preliminary map, they will actually adopt it as the best available data and enforce to that map, and I was curious if that had happened in this case, and if the city commission or city council has adopted the preliminary map.
And I am not sure on that, but I think assistance administration, Silver, can answer that.
Thank you. We've not adopted it, Commissioner Walker, but what we've done, you know, in these situations, the mapping is so kind of generic, the Zone A exists out here, so when we ask for a building, when they come to get a building permit, if by that time we haven't adopted it, we use best available data, and we trust that the preliminary flood map is the best available data, so their elevation certificate, we relate to that best available data, which is preliminary flood map. If it's Zone A, you know, they're required to do a flood study, well, the flood study's been done, so we require that. The most recent one, and Jerry was involved with this, we actually use that, uh, Jerry, what's the percent allowable fill for the Blackwater Fireworks site?
That's actually, that was part of my question, because I know that the preliminary mapping, we've gone from steady-state mapping to unsteady-state mapping, and one of the things that we find in unsteady-state mapping is that they're more sensitive to little miles of fill than we've seen in the past, and so that's why I was wondering if it was adopted as best available data, and if as a part of that adoption, there was methodology in place to account for additional fill. So, you are using a limitation on the amount of fill per acre or per some unit?
Well, actually, Seema came up with a guidance, and we're using that guidance, even though it hasn't been adopted yet, because it's Zone A. So, if it was Zone AE, for instance, if we're in a 2015 map, or just kind of redid, like if we're looking around the Selberg Fourth Edition, for instance, because that map's been adopted, we would use that. In this area, we're in a situation where we're almost lucky that we get to test it out. It's Zone A, they're required to do a flood study, the flood study's been done, we utilize that, and following methodologies of that flood report, you know, steady-state model, percent allowable fill, luckily, there's also been a Seema guidance that's been created, and a contractor hired by City Cass Water Resource District to manage that model, and we're utilizing that process. So, we're getting to test it out before we've actually done it. I believe by the time they go to get a building permit, we will have adopted that. At the time of plat, though, today, we haven't, so we have to rely on that being in Zone A. Luckily, there's also that building permit layer on top of that, and so we're able to do that flood study requirement. I hope that answers your question.
You can apply that for me. The 2015 is still to be adopted.
Actually, in this area, I don't.
Being adopted prior to the 2015.
I'm sorry.
The 2015 act is what's in place right now, but we anticipate the 2018 being adopted in sufficient time.
Yeah, and to start with, speaking to somebody who knew the zone.
She's talking way over my head.
So, Zone A is, we know this area floods, but we've not done a detailed enough study to determine how, what the base flood elevation is, what that elevation number is when it floods. So, it really leaves the onus on the jurisdiction to require that person who wants to develop that to do a flood study. In this case, we have gotten that study done, that study's about 20 years old now, and it hasn't been adopted yet. We have that study done, so we have them use that study, we don't make them go out and do a new study, but we do have them hire their own engineer to provide to us results of what their impact of developing that site will be. So, when they go to get a building permit, it's not going to be a simple, hey, we just got to bring in the fill to this level, two and a half feet above that, they actually have to do this, you know, provide the flood study. We're accepting that, that current preliminary flood map is now to a position where we're going to accept it. We've worked with Selfie's CAFs to determine that, you know, that that study's good, so we're good. I believe we're good. Problem is on the plat, we can't have them put a preliminary flood map that's not been adopted on the plat, so they're going to have to have Zone A on the plat. When they come in to get a building permit is when they're going to go through that. Hopefully, by that point, we've adopted that flood map, and they have to just simply pay that extra fee to run that model to determine the percent allowable fill, and likely what we saw with the Blackwater Fireworks is it was minimal impact. So, I can't say for sure that's going to happen here. An area that he didn't point out is Zone X, the area that I think where a lot of the buildings are, is Zone X, but there is an area of this plat that is in Zone AE, so we're going to have to update that staff report to reflect that.
And so, the extra bonus paper yesterday I gave you at the beginning there, it shows more engineering's number day, that shows what the preliminary map format is, looks like when overlaid with the current location or area of the plat. So, you can kind of see like what's in what zone there.
And I have one follow-up question related to the access requirement. Is there a depth that's allowed, a flood depth that's allowed that they can drive through, or does that have to be a dry access? Not clear in the.
There's nothing that's mandated by organs, it was just a previous recommendation that we recommended with the previous staff corps on a property that was built on, I believe, back in 2018, and so we just carried over that recommendation as well. So, I don't believe we have any sort of depth that is outlined anywhere, if that answers your question.
How will you interpret that? Maybe that's a question for engineering, I don't know.
Yes, Commissioner, in the past, it's been recommended, I guess, that access be built for the base flood elevation, just to allow for first responders, EMS, there's an expectation for them to reach the property. If the road is underwater, the chances of that occurring are, it's not going to occur, so that's where that recommendation comes from.
I guess my question is, is that there access out to the main road? The main road in this case does go underwater.
Sure.
Right, it's cut off access to other, it's cut off dry access, let me put it that way, not necessarily access, which is where the question comes from. You know, there are some recommendations out there regarding the depth of water at which a car can get swept away, and some jurisdictions interpret less than that amount of water.
Sure.
It's considered access at 100, I was just curious how that's interpreted in this particular case, and maybe that West Fargo doesn't deal with that very often, because you don't deal with these extraterritorial areas that have this issue very often.
I'll be honest with you, Commissioner Walker, we don't deal with a lot, and I don't, I'm not aware of firm policy on it, but I imagine we'll have these discussions when they apply for the flood and development permit.
Sure, thank you.
You bet.
So, we added it on the previous application, and I think that's where staff picked it up from. We looked at a piece of land that you'd have to build that road up quite a bit, and then you are negatively impacting the neighbor, and so we actually, engineering looked at it, Dustin and Jerry looked at it, and realized you probably have to put in substantial over to be able to do this, so you start looking at it, work through an hydraulic study to permit building my house back there, and you know what's wrong. In a case like this, luckily, we know, we've had records, floods of record in this area, and there is access, 120 does go under, I believe it's, there's portions of that that you can get through, six inches of. Between, at the Cheyenne Bridge?
No, for that, there's two areas on 120, right near Session 17.
Yep, yep, yep. that requires access at or above base flood elevation, we're adding it to this entitlement phase. So, we believe based on past events, that it's important that any development outside of our city is not a burden to the county or the township, and we've had situations where there has been development that's occurred that has been a burden to this county or county. We don't want to be the jurisdiction that allows for that development to happen. So, what we've just done in precedence here now, is any development ET, we say you have to have access to it or above base flood elevation. That doesn't just mean your driveway to the road, it means that that road needs to have access to it or above base flood elevation, and so we've sought out comments from the township and the county. I haven't gotten any feedback on this one from either. My assumption was County Road 20, and there are assumptions right now, we're going to base our opinion on what we get from those entities, but my assumption was that County Road 20, you had about six inches of water you could get through there on a four-wheel drive, if you're coming from interstate to 20. Is there any other back road to get access to this? I know they can't go south, south that dips down Maple Valley, you're not getting through there, but if you go north, so we happen to have like an expert of this area on our planning commission that helps, you know, so that, these are points that through this entitlement phase, we should be picking up on so that we don't create burden to other entities. So, your added recommendation here is fantastic to have.
Access is that an emergency responder can get access to your property, because, you
know, the owner today might be fine, you know, they might have a tractor, they might have all of that, but you know, if you sell it to somebody, our job is to really protect the health, safety, and more of the people that we're regulating here, and if we can't provide them access at or above base flood elevation from an emergency responder, then we're not really doing our job.
Okay, so you said County 20, is that this 26th Street?
No, that's where it is, it's early, or 20 is if you have to draw a little bit, it's just, this goes two miles west of 17, and about a half mile.
Okay, so with the condition, the 1% event access to 26th Street, you say is underwater?
Well, it's, I've seen it water water, it's been more before.
Which is?
Off the.
So, is that implying that if the condition would be all the way back to that, that they would be responsible for making improvements to 26th? Is that what we're saying?
Well, I mean, but then you can't go east, you have to raise a common problem, you can't go west if you're making first County 24 underwater, I haven't been there, or County 22.
So, you just described that 1% event will isolate this from outside, and there is no potential for access during that. Well, you're, but that description means that there is no.
Well, I, I tractor, I mean, when I got access, when I got, I didn't know what to define, you gotta make an activity, on their lot, and the road goes around a lot, and that will respond, but we forgot about access for emergency vehicles, those water is a long side of that, which I understand is 97, is that there, you know, I think, I think the virginity, that wasn't, but, you know, the road blocks out, I have a tractor in six feet of water, and that's why I was saying, which now makes it easier to access to this table, it doesn't wash out, because where I was, I was there, but I would not look at the small parts of that.
I think it's fair to say that 97 is a good approximation, based on the actual floods that we have seen, 2009 is probably closer, but again, different sources of water, right, whether that water comes from North Dakota or Minnesota, yeah.
97, but we did have an emergency storm, you know, I have a lot of our, they could be out of, that's why they went, they went out, and they were literally getting a tractor at their, that's how I go with it, but, I mean, I don't, I'm trying to, to deal with our, you know, I can't get that definition here.
Well, and I think, understanding what we just heard, to me, it doesn't mean that you can't approve this, it, what it does mean is that this is likely something that would have a hard time getting a building permit until that time as we see a CLOMER, a CLOMER adopted for the diversion or something else possibly, that provides them dry access. But, I mean, I just wanted to have this conversation because we don't want the assumption to be that a building permit is ready and waiting upon approval here today. There's still a lot of things to be resolved if this property is going to be built on.
But that does kind of, I like the way you phrase it, what's the scope are we talking about on that condition, that 1% chance, is that access to the nearest road, or is that all the way back to emergency services, which would then be?
I understand that, we don't have the permission to have the direction of the mission, to define missions, I think.
Yes, I would like your opinion.
Access would need to be provided all the way up to wherever your responder is beginning from, I did, we have had experiences, and I have lived experiences where we can't understand how to protect ourselves, you know, if we can't do that, then why would we approve that? So, I'm not saying that my team can't do this, this is really important, that we got to make sure that people understand, you know, you need to protect yourself, you need to provide, make sure that we're not in a situation where we are ending, you have fishing boats or an airboat, you're going to do the flat, but sure, we're, we'll get you out there and all, we do.
But I, I once had a, the fire chief tell me that if you can't self-evacuate, it's no longer evacuation, it's a rescue. And so, to me, I always look at it from the context of, are they able to self-evacuate? And based on the description that you gave, there's a real difficulty to self-evacuation from this property.
Is there any real repercussion if this committee approves this going forward from the landowners? Something goes out?
Thank you, Commissioner, I don't believe there is any legal repercussion, I've researched past developments where the county filed properties that were approved by the city Fargo, and there's really no liability on them to know everything, but now that we know it, and that we're presenting it to you, and if you ignore it, that's maybe a different case, but, so our job is to present to you all the facts, and that's what that condition, you know, I think you can engineer anything, they can engineer something here and make this all work out, but you step back and you start to look at it, I really appreciate Commissioner Gus's opinion and experience on that area, and that's what we seek when we send this out to the townships and the counties. We have a lot of recent experience, a lot of headaches and a lot of late nights, and a lot of having to stare in your office with a lot of life.
Been there.
And eating at all bars for breakfast lunch and dinner because of these situations, and I'm just not going to, you know, ignore it, so.
So, yeah, and that was just my question, knowing about this now, if it's approved, is there a different view of that on the legal side, or since we've talked about it, and there could be problems with the access, and noting how some of the commissioners get into their place at this point during these times, does that take the lead off of everybody's shoulders and leave it on the landowner?
That's what we try to do, is, you know, if there's an opportunity, if there's an ability for them to do something, and, you know, the onus is always on them to prove to us that they can do this, so if they can seek out that information on how deep the water is at 40th Avenue, you know, is, can a car make its way through that? I mean, we do as much as we can with the information we have available to us, we don't have that information, I don't know the depth of the flooding on County Road 20, they might have to go to the county and find that, or do some historical research themselves to prove to us that they can be condition one there, so they could still provide that proof to us. If the planning commission tonight doesn't feel comfortable that they can do that through the testimony of one of our own commissioners, then you might want to table this, or you might want to make another recommendation that what staff provided, but.
I'm not going to get into that, one more time, I think, but, I just want everybody to all understand.
And I don't know if I adequately answered.
That event is a significant flood.
Yeah, we're taking that cue off of actually having pretty darn near 1% events, and having fight those floods, so we're seeing these cycles, we're a little fresh off of that from 2009, 10, and 11, towards 97, so, I did, I don't know if I adequately answered your question for sure, I don't know if John wants to weigh in or not.
Well, what we're doing on, I don't, you probably, probably wouldn't occur, necessarily occurring in my ability to, this is, you're in a draft, where you're just living, the actual information, you have, like, anything to build on the property. The actual information that you have against anything to build on the property. There, there's going to be a risk, just being, normally an additional use permit, you're not in possession of that, um, approval that, you know, you're releasing all things, you know. It's not a guarantee that we're having any kind of property.
Yeah, thank you, that's my question, if that is put in there, will that be written in the conditional use permit? Something to do with the access, I'm not sure of the verbiage on that. So you're suggesting we add that as one of the conditions? Or is that something that is in the actual conditional use permit documentation that release? More the latter, Mr. Starkey?
Yeah, we would, normally we put in, uh, I think in the form of the conditional use permit, there's a section, and they're talking about the city's, because we're granting it to them, meaning that we're committing any liability.
Okay, okay.
And they don't have to prove to us they have that. They have to prove to the commission, that's how that works.
Uh huh.
So that's, that was in front of me, certification. I want a definition of the access, if this happens again.
I'm not sure why we would take the candle to, to the city commission.
Tell us, tell us what's in the condition.
Okay.
That they have approved.
To the city commission, but, so, okay.
But that's, that's a condition.
It's not going to mean why we would go ahead with approval if a building permit is, uh, at this stage, quite a, a gap from what is known and, and the best data available. So I'm more inclined to say either we need more data, or this should wait until there is more information and it is clear that a building permit is viable.
This has to go before the city commission, right? And, and they would have to show the city commission that access is 1%. That has to happen before you, uh, deliver.
They would have to show access if that was a condition of approval, not, so if, if, so if, if you as a commission want to keep staff's recommendation within, within the, the approval process. So if you were to approve it tonight and require that staff recommendation be included in that, then yes, that would, that would happen, or would need to happen.
Absolutely. You are?
I am Carla Barnes, um, I'm one of, me and my husband, along that want to buy the property. And so I just wanted to say that, uh, on our end, for needing any type of help, my dad's a truck driver and has always had trucks. And so for us, feeling safe out there, I lived out in Oak Park my whole life, um, we're very well-known for flooding out there as well. So I feel very confident as the owner, um, was living out there with no problems of flood, we've lived with that. And so, and I know from experience that I know we could do our, do what we need to make it safe on our own. In 97, actually, um, everyone left Oak Park except for my dad. And so, we, we were on this little tiny island, and we stayed out there, and my dad just actually took care of our neighbors' homes. And, and so I am, I am very confident myself that we could do everything in our power to, to keep our property safe, is what we feel. So, I just wanted to say that to you guys.
Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you.
Just a question for John, excuse me. The diversion project, if completed, would that rectify the access problem?
My understanding.
Okay, and the second question is, does I know you're, you're having involvement, is that on track, hopefully, to be completed in the next seven, or whatever years?
The, for the diversion channel, which would, not defer to more technical minded people, but the diversion channel in that area would protect from the overland flooding and the river flooding. That is to be completed in the week 2027 for flood year protection of 2028.
Okay, so if the diversion does go through, and this is, obviously, we don't, we got fortune that there were no major floods in the next five years, the ex, excuse me, the access wouldn't be, hopefully, an issue at that point. But we can't guarantee that, obviously. So, but I just wanted to record that, hopefully, the diversion is completed, and it will rectify the problem we're talking about.
And the flood map then changes after the diversion gets put in, probably, right? That's what happened?
Uh-uh.
Probably.
On that point, the, the purpose of a coumer, it's a conditional letter map provision, um.
I was gonna ask you what that meant.
The purpose of that is typically a jurisdiction that's proposing project, um, will describe to FEMA what they intend to build, and say, if we build it as we described, do you agree on what will and won't be in the floodplain once it's built? And so if that coumer is granted, it generally means there's an agreement on, um, the status of the floodplain post-construction. That process can take quite a bit longer than the construction process itself. I was involved in one project that the actual construction was completed, and it took almost 10 years for the coumer to get approved. So I appreciate, I agree totally that that's the intent. I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that there is that delay, that it can happen. So this portion of the project gets completed in 27, but in order for the coumer to be enacted, the entire project has to be completed and certified in its entirety. And then there's a process they will go through to, um, to finalize that, that, that could take a few years. So, um, practically, they should have some protection, but from a mapping perspective, it could take a little longer.
Well, like the Styanne diversion, that didn't get approved till like 2010 or later, right?
I wasn't involved in that one, I don't have knowledge of the time frame. You, you might know better than me, Mr. Guss.
It was adopted in 2011.
It was before.
Yeah.
Before, first operation.
I moved here in 2011, and I remember that was just getting voted on ourselves. All right.
I don't think in, in duration of the version, may or may not be, or may not be. They said to restart construction on the channel, this time, it doesn't look like they're gonna start. I think Congress is appropriating anything for products, uh, giving them, but, uh, congressional appropriations, or any discussion of that. I don't find him to sound commission, he's a commission, he would access, and they're comfortable with it, but, um, but that, that, I mean, that's a way to staff recommendations. I don't tend not to vote in staff recommendations unless they're really awful, I mean, see anything. So, I mean, I'll, I'll go through the recommend, the condition, the recommendations.
What's made?
But the, the limit of liability, that.
No, the right-of-way, 33 feet or so.
Oh, oh, 70, okay, 75, 75, 72.
Okay, has been moved. Anyone wish to second that motion? Moved and seconded to approve with the seven conditions plus an eighth regarding, um, increase of the right-of-way from 33 feet to 75 feet. Are there any other questions? Discussion points? Prior to vote? No? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
Aye.
I would know about floodplains than I had thought I would. Okay, agenda item number five, public hearing, A21 dash 21 Eagle Run Plaza 12th, repot of Lot 8, Block 1 of Eagle Run Plaza, 9th Edition, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, Brayham. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped four, they wish to table it, do we need to discuss it?
I don't believe there's anybody here in the public.
Uh, do I need to do a motion to table it? I do. The applicant has, I'm sorry, thank you for catching, I skipped over, because I just told they want to table. Uh, item number four, uh, is A21 dash 20, the applicant has requested to table. Move it to table. Moved and seconded to table, um, A21 dash 20, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Item, uh, table. Number five, I already said the whole thing.
All right, thank you, this application is received in order to replant property for sale and development. This property is located directly east of the Creative Learning Daycare Center, south of 32nd Avenue West. The applicant has submitted an application and preliminary plat, which consists of splitting a platted lot into four smaller lots with cross-access and utility easements to provide access and infrastructure to each individual lot for proposed office condominiums. The proposed lot sizes will adequately meet yard requirements for development in light commercial as well as corridor overlay district regulations. Under section 4 dash 43 1.52, there is a higher construction standard for areas in the corridor overlay district, which will require the applicant to submit site and building plans to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Commission at a later date for approval prior to issuance of a building permit. Access is proposed to 32nd Avenue West, as well as the existing cross-access easements to 32nd Avenue West, 6th Street, and 9th Streets West, um, from the original Eagle Run Plaza, 9th Edition flats. In the subdivision agreement for Eagle Run Plaza 9th Edition, each lot will be required to include connectivity via sidewalks across access easements. The proposed replat does not affect any existing public easements or right-of-ways. It is recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that is consistent with city plans and ordinances, with recommended conditions of approval as follows. An updated drainage plan is received and approved by the city engineer. An updated utility plan is received and approved by the city engineer. Assigned final plat is received with any necessary easements. An attorney title painting is received. A certificate, show, is received showing taxes are current, and it is subject to an executed subdivision agreement for the Eagle Run Plaza 9th Edition. This is a public hearing, and I am available for any comments, questions.
Thank you. It's a public hearing, I'll open it up for public comment. As before, please, if you have to, if you wish to comment, uh, come up to the podium, identify yourself, and, um, so, any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll close that section, commissioners.
Um, I'm wondering if there is any reason why the owner is, um, proposing to flag the two lots in the back so that they have a right-of-way touch? It looks like we're creating two trapped lots that won't have a physical touch to public right-of-way.
So they will have access here on the access easement?
Right, easements, um.
Or it's a private drive, basically, um, it's an, um, I believe it's platted already, or shown. It's not shown on here, but this is a paved road, right here.
Public road?
It's a private.
Private road.
And then, public access, paved, is that what you're?
Does the public access include, um, the ability to service the sewer and water through that public portion?
So it's not trapped?
Well, that's what I, I think you're saying, that they have the right to put sewer and water behind it. So there would be a way to get to them without having to cross somebody else's private property with sewer and water. Okay, thank you.
And the plat we've determined 3 feet is appropriate for us, as long as we were part of that. And that, the road through there was actually done through an improvement district, where we put in public sewer and water, and they, um, actually, we put in the pavement of the road in the district, I believe, right? Yeah, um, but it is their responsibility to file that road. Um, so that, you know, it's not a public right-of-way, so we're not up there paving, but we do have access to utilities in there.
Right.
See what's our utilities on these.
If you ever needed to replace the water main, you have the right to do that. That's what I'm interested in, thank you.
Any other questions? It has been moved and seconded to approve the application as presented with six recommendations. All those in, like, follow up, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Item number six, public hearing, A21 dash 22, conditional use permit for ready-mixed concrete plant at 1351 8th Avenue Northwest, Lot 11, Block 2 of West Fargo 3rd Edition, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, Cost.
Thank you, this application is received in order to allow for a concrete ready-mixed concrete plant operation. Property is currently vacant and located west of an existing concrete batch plant. The applicant has submitted a site plan and elevations for a proposed ready-mixed concrete operation. Conditional use permit agreement is required to be signed prior to issuance of a building permit and made according to conditions deemed appropriate by the commission. In terms of criteria for granting a conditional use permit, no concerns were noted. Property owners were notified within 350 feet, and comments were received. It's recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that is consistent with city plans and ordinances, with a recommended condition of approval as follows, assigned conditional use permit agreement is received. This is a public hearing.
Thank you. Are there elements for public comment? Is there any comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll close that section, commissioners.
I want to follow that building. I can't remember. I want to say 35 feet, but I can't remember on the, which was on the site plan. I know it reviewed. For some reason, I thought it was 35 feet, based on permit information.
So this used is continually used in a heavy industrial?
Yes. Possible impact to, um, areas neighboring.
Because of the dust or whatever?
Pardon me?
Because of things like dust, I was just surprised, I thought heavy industrial would include this as a permitted use.
Correct, um, potential for.
I don't think we want that out of that.
I'm not sure exactly what that is.
I don't know.
I'm not sure exactly. They have a similar operation to the ease. They have a similar operation to the east, right here. I thought the elevation was thirty-five feet, but I...
It is beyond thirty-five, like in the plans, it's thirty-five plus. Doesn't have the height of the silo on there, it's forty-two plus.
So what would the... So what would the restrictions be in the flat? Is that the area to the east, this one? That's currently, I don't think they were concerned about it. I believe Strada has been located on Twelfth Avenue Northwest and County Road Seventeen, but that one might be...
Yeah, I'm like that.
Okay. We can verify with the applicant and have him get back to us if you refer to the city commission, we can, he can review that, double-check with us prior to city commission review.
Anybody else?
Well, we could verify with the applicant, but then what's done about that or who decides whether that's acceptable or not? What's the proper position in the city to determine whether that's too much particulate in the air or whatever?
I don't believe that's anything we would normally look at, um, as far as, as far as the air quality, um...
Yeah, thank you for that. Doesn't seem that we have an obligation to do diligence here and make sure that we are not alone, something out of an inappropriate...
Conditions to be added to the conditional use permit, um, Tim has texted the applicant, he wasn't unable to make it to the meeting this evening, so...
There isn't a whole lot of detail on the plan that they provided, but I believe that's a bin for the point, it's not an actual functioning chimney, but, uh, I would certainly want to follow up on that, just to verify.
Doesn't the EPA cover most of the things regarding emissions anyway? Yeah, I mean, that's covered in EPA type things when I...
Correct.
Concrete has to be completely sealed, yeah.
And we could certainly try to get more information. Uh, the applicant did comment that, uh, what they're proposing is all within the tolerances of the state's requirements. You have... Not an answer. It was insightful, but there was an answer.
Can we add to the conditions that there be a summary view of the things that meet EPA standards and state standards for emissions?
Yeah, yeah, I did add to that, that they monitor, monitor it and have a record approving that it is within tolerance, um, so, I, there is certain provisions that the City of Fargo, City of West Fargo, we don't have per view over because the state has authority on that, and this would be one of those, we don't have a Department of Air Quality within our, or Department of Environmental Health even, we go to the Fargo-Cass Public Health Board for that, and we do provide, um, uh, all of these reports, our applications to them as an agency to comment, uh, we don't provide it to the North Dakota Department of Health because simply they wouldn't respond, there's so many different things going on with the state for, these applicants are required by their own permits to get those permits, and so, as far as those, we'll see that we trust, if the commission feels necessary through a conditional use permit process to add a condition that we monitor that, certainly could, um, I almost guarantee that the amount of staff that we have can't stand up of every air quality, and that's why we don't have an air quality division within our city, so I, you know, just think that's a great recommendation to add, and as staff has time to do those types of things, or as the commission directs us, we'll do them. I don't know if that answers your question adequately, but as a, as a, a point of body, elected body, you guys have the right to certainly direct us to do anything, so...
It doesn't seem to me that they've put it in as a condition that it does kind of flag it for the applicant and, um, whether staff is able to monitor this, I get that, you know, on a regular basis, but it does signal that that is a concern, and it seems to me that this body ought to make sure that that is something going forward.
Do I hear the shaping of the motion?
I'll move to approve, uh, with condition one, assigned conditional use permit agreement is received. Condition two, it's verified that the building is not, um, in conflict with FAA state have or restricted heights. And condition three, they are found to be in compliance with, uh, the North Dakota Department of Health with regard to their emissions. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the application with the three conditions. Um, any further comments or questions? Right, going to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Item number seven, public hearing, A twenty-one dash twenty-three, West Fargo Twelfth Edition re-plot of Lot Two, Block One, West Fargo Eighth Edition, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, Four Sons, L L L P.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, so this application, the applicant is proposing to this subdivide one lot into two lots. Uh, the proposed lot number one is currently under construction, um, with manufacturing and office space, and the property owner wants to construct an additional structure, um, on the lots to the east with its own legal description. The proposed lot sizes will adequately meet yard requirements for development in the heavy industrial zoning district. Um, we did receive, uh, some comments today from Cass County, um, right before this meeting, um, that any new access points to Eighth Avenue Northwest are grading on southeast, um, Cass Water Resource District right-of-way would need to be permitted through the district in the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Um, to my knowledge, I don't believe any new access points are being proposed at this time. Um, proposed application is consistent with city plans and ordinances, and it is staff's recommendation to approve the application, um, with the recommended conditions of approval as follows, that an updated drainage plan is approved by the city engineer, that attorney title opinion is received, that assigned final plat with any necessary easements is received, and that a certificate is received showing taxes are correct. This is a public hearing.
Thank you. Public hearing, open that section up for any public comment. If anybody wished a comment from the public. Seeing none, we'll close that. Questions, comments, concerns? It has been moved and seconded to approve the application with the recommendations listed by staff prior to vote. Uh, anybody have any questions? Comments, concerns? Discussion points? Seeing none, we'll go to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Item number eight, A twenty-one dash twenty-four, Carmel Place, Second Edition, retracement plot of all of Block Two of Carmel Place First Subdivision, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, Anderson.
Unlike the previous application where we were dividing, or dividing one lot into two lots, um, this application, uh, the applicant is proposing to combine two previously subdivided lots into one lot. The property owners are wishing to combine the properties which had previously been planted for the purpose of building across lot lines and/or increasing the lot area to address district requirements. Um, no additional right-of-way is required or being established, there is no proposed or perceived need of public improvements as a result of combining the platted lots. Lots to be combined are contiguous and they're both under common ownership. The owner intends to construct a residence on the property and seeking a permit, the property is served by rural water, no sanitary sewer exists in the area, uh, and in order to construct on the property, a permit to connect to rural water will be required, and a permit from Fargo-Cass Public Health, uh, to install a septic tank will also be required as well. The proposed retracement plat will not affect the property or use, the retracement plat will begin a subdivision name with a lot and block number which will be of benefit to the city and to the Cass County for administrative purposes. With retracement plat, there are no street, uh, right-of-way dedication or park dedication requirements. A public hearing is not required, though the applicant may plat property according to platting standards, and the plat must be reviewed by the planning and zoning and city commission. Um, we've received no comments from applicable agencies or departments to date. Um, the proposed application is consistent with city plans and ordinances, it is staff's recommendation that the city approve the proposed application on basis that it is consistent with plans and ordinances with recommended conditions of approval as follows, that attorney title opinion to the City of West Fargo is received, that assigned final plat is received with any necessary easements, and that certificate is received showing taxes are correct. This is not a public hearing.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? I think... It has been moved and seconded to approve the application as presented with the three recommendations. Any discussion points or questions?
We don't notify property owners with the latter retracement plat, and they are proposing a single-family dwelling similar to what's in the area.
So they're going from two houses to one?
Correct.
Any other questions or discussion points before we vote? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Item number nine on the agenda, site plan review, commercial overlay district Randy's diner at six forty-one Thirty-second Avenue West, B C Concutting. It's gonna be a whole little spot for a house.
Thank you, this application was received in order to construct a four thousand six hundred and thirty square foot single-street structure for use as an eating and drinking establishment. Under section four dash four-three-one point five point two, there is a higher construction standard for areas in the corridor overlay district, requiring the applicant to receive approval of site and building plans prior to approval of a building permit for those areas along Cheyenne Street between the interstate, as well as Fortieth Avenue, Thirty-second Avenue, west of Cheyenne Street, and Thirteenth Avenue East. The building is faced with a combination of glass, plywood, brick, fiberglass, and architectural flush metal panels, with a fifty-five percent non, fifty-five percent non-metal materials facing the road which would exceed our standard of thirty percent. The building construction standards under the corridor overlay district limits light commercial properties to no more than thirty percent, metal fiberglass on all walls fronting the public streets, provided it is coordinated into the architectural design. The applicant is asking for approval indicating that these are not agricultural metal panels and are architectural flush metal panels. Staff leaves the ordinance gives commission the ability to discern if the proposed material meets the intent of the district. Access appear to be adequate, landscaping appears to be more than adequate. Under the original subdivision plat, requirement for sidewalk or multi-use path connectivity within subdivision is a condition of approval and addressed in an assigned improvement agreement. The applicant has submitted a plan showing connectivity via Thirty-second Avenue West, multi-use path with crosswalks through the parking lot connecting to Master Kila and Randy's restaurant sidewalks. Required parking would be one space per employee on the larger shift, plus one space per one hundred square feet of gross floor area. Fifty-seven parking spaces would be required with the site potential in forty-two spaces. The applicant indicated they intend to enter a shared parking agreement with Master Kila to the east for the additional fifteen parking spaces required due to peak parking ties not coinciding between the two buildings. Under section four dash four-five-one, the Planning and Zoning Commission may allow shared parking of required parking by two separate uses, provided the normal peak parking times of the two uses do not coincide. A long-term agreement shall be negotiated whereby both uses are bound to the establishment and maintenance of the shared off-street parking. Direct access is proposed to Thirty-Third Avenue West and to Sixth Street and Ninth Streets West through cross-access easements within the plat. Engineering is noted concern with the west access onto the private drivings proximity to Thirty-second Avenue West. The information that has been submitted shows the city plans and development requirements can be met, staff's recommendation is to approve the site and building plans submitted to the city commission. This is not a public hearing, and I believe there's a representative, um, available to answer any questions as well.
So we're basically being asked to agree with just the fact that this kind of steel siding is different than...
Correct, I believe intent of the, the ordinance was to prevent, um, the type of metal that you see on Sam Morton Building, um, based on the facade showing an architectural, what they call an architectural flush metal panel, and it's an example here.
But we're, today, we're not really talking about, or, does it have sufficient parking? It's not part of the conversation today.
Parking, they would need to provide parking, so...
That would be separate in the future, right?
So we're, we're looking, they will need to enter a, a parking agreement, um, they will, prior to getting a permit, they need to prove that, um, there's adequate parking.
But we're not talking about that right now. Correct. Is that how it works? I was getting it all wrong. So, yeah, but I'm, I'm just asking a question for clarification, we're not looking at, we don't have a parking agreement right now, but that would be prior to the parking side things.
Go ahead.
Uh, section four dash four-five oh, off-street parking regulations require a reduction in parking provided by resolution of the city commission, so we, if at time of permit they don't provide that shared parking agreement and/or enough parking, then we go to the city commission with, uh, a justification to reduce the parking, so the planning commission doesn't have oversight in that.
Okay.
And it's a permitted... And it's a permitting issue.
We just get decided.
You get to hear all about it and if it were a P U D, then you certainly would weigh in or a condition use permit, you'd certainly weigh in on if parking is an issue or not. Otherwise, we could deal with that permitting.
So the question in play is, is the aesthetic associated with this design consistent with the goals of our corridor overlay? And is this something we had to vote on or is this a?
Yes.
Yes, okay. There's my.
What, you know, what's happening is including that type of cultural paint out there. It's just, it's decorative, it's aesthetically pleasing, it's cool. So, you know, this isn't a class that you want, you know, I mean, I would look for that from you guys, you know.
And the ordinance says metal and it doesn't differentiate. And there is language in the ordinance that, you know, if you feel that other materials are appropriate and in this case, if you feel that these materials meet site plan and elevation requirements.
But just to refresh my memory, the West Fargo Hockey Arena, the West Fargo Arena there, they have metal architectural panels as well as the lights have some as well, I think, as accents. So I think that's the problem is when you think metal, we all think back of quantum buildings or corrugated.
I don't think we, I don't think we approve that the Hockey Arena person. We've done that several times because they want to keep coming back.
At the time, it was land unit development, so with their flexibility.
One of the, one of the, you have discretion, you have discretion on some people, you know. I always try to, actual basis or position that we have to go forward to. Some people come to me now, you should be able to, whether it's ready or not, or why would we change the ordinance so that people can do that? And then we don't need to worry about P U D, picking winners and losers based on who they are or what they're doing. We just, I used to, we struggled so many.
Yeah, we struggled so much.
Over and over and over and suddenly now we're gonna come out and say we're all for them.
No, so we struggled so much on is metal okay, is metal not okay? And I think where we started to get into the world of metals okay is probably by Carlin Davidson on Interstate and they're starting to provide like, these are actually a different type of metal. Because anybody could say it's architectural, you just have an architect stamp a plan. You know, any building can be architectural. That's where we lost sight of that word and now we start to use the discretion to bring it before you. I would look at things like what they talked about, how there's no exposed stressors, you know. Is it a flat panel versus corrugated? Those types of things. We've looked at metal buildings that have a bonded material on them. So that bonded material and it's less of a shiny metal surface that has extended lifespan. You know, those are the types of things that we try to base this on. It's not, so there's discretion, but you gotta have basis for your discretion, you know, and that's kinda what we're trying to do here. Having them provide this elevation of what it's gonna look like helps.
Looking cool is our discretion.
Well, no, it shouldn't be. Looking cool shouldn't be. Whether it's Randy's diner or, you know, that will change place. That shouldn't come into your discretion, but looking at that and using some of the fact that they pointed out might be.
What they look like when they're on the insurance side of the side. You see several of these companies are putting out a non-structural hail exclusion, so it's not non-structural, you know, we're here, so they have hailgains all over the place. Or are these not hail resistant? I mean, what kind of panel, we just agreed that we're just gonna go aluminum dining, you know, we look at it. But it's still, my problem is we just see icons for stolen years. And then suddenly someone will say, yes, we're gonna allow. Why wouldn't we change ordinance for everybody going forward that says, hey, maybe you can save that house? I think they changed a lot and that's the real.
Well, I agree with them. I, I would just agree with that. That's why we're giving discretion. But we're not.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we're not, we don't know what they're gonna look like in twenty years. Are they gonna be eyesore and things rustling from one end to the other? It'd look like the Six Hour Land that used to be out on Main Avenue. We're looking at all fifty-year-old buildings on Main Avenue, they're still there. Still there. We know the metal is cheaper, that's why they all want to use it. So that's, that's my, just that we denied this forever. Why wouldn't we let everybody keep doing this all for years, living there nothing but metal buildings up and down the street?
You're right, it's not cut and dry. It's always easier. It is discretionary and it is unfortunately an aesthetic opinion. Does it meet the spirit of the corridor overlay requirements to not allow or argue the word cheap? That's really the only goal.
And the problem is this space is Thirty-second Avenue, right? And that's why we have this issue. It was almost anywhere else, plus it doesn't use major arterial route, it's a problem, right?
But it's gonna stay.
As long as the front end looks good, you can be quiet on one side. But in this case, we got to go. Because of the long period.
Trying to look like fifty-nine two and style thing going on there. I don't know if it's just surely because steel is less expensive versus style that's going for, I don't know. If that's why it's on.
Lisa, can you scroll back one image? Can you tell me what panels are metal versus what panels are other material looking at this image? Do we know that?
No, I'm just wondering. I attached his email. I did not, did I?
Well, I guess from the top section, above the glass is all metal. That's how I look at it. I thought it was. Right here. Almost a print.
Can't afford that machine. Looks like brick on the bottom and almost everything on the top is metal.
Yeah, there was a calculation as far as the amount of steel rate after what the number was. The architect provided that to you.
I mean, there's an email that talks about the facades and forty-five percent of the aggregate area, the northeast-western facades comprised of glass, full wood, brick or fiberglass cement. And then fifty-five percent of aggregate area of the northeast-western facades comprised of architectural flush metal panels. There are two iterations of architectural flush metal panels. Vertical orientation at the canopy slash overhang and horizontal orientation at the remainder. So we've got canopy area and then I believe the area down here.
Under the corridor overlay, what is the permissible percentage of steel again?
Thirty percent.
So they're.
Correct.
You know, it might be one thing to say, we'd like to request thirty-five percent because that finishes off this wall or something that we could hang our hat on. And, you know, I appreciate that Tim was saying, well, look, think about, is there some architectural reason for this? But that's a, that's a big difference, thirty to fifty-five. And why do, why do we have the standard then? So I'm a, I'm a little hesitant. We don't know what this will look like in ten to twenty years, do we? Unless, maybe there is some more information from a supplier about the quality of these. We don't have that information per se.
And we could ask the applicant to come back and provide that information. I believe initially that they had misunderstood the ordinance and thought it was seventy percent. I believe that's what the email that they said is. And then they added that language where it could be reviewed for other materials. So whatever you're comfortable with, if you prefer that they come back at the July meeting and answer these questions or answer prior to the city commission review.
Oh. Wait, wait, you're.
No, I can't.
Are we saying table list or? Is that? Continue?
Like, does the ordinance need to be looked at? I believe it does. I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm, I'm just, I'm against doing what we keep hitting and trying to win it because some people are signing their tables, they're signing, you know. I'm just saying, you hear, let's give a sign ordinance that everybody, not just one or two people that have that.
Could it be after I retire? Could it be after I retire?
We love signing.
No, I do that.
I propose, we made it up from day one. That's why I want somebody else to make the ordinance we can follow.
It, yeah.
But I'm just, we either, we either need to start making these rules to be followed or we see no need to be picking certain people that, yeah, we like their side, but we don't like anybody else. We like this metal, but we don't like anybody else's metal. How do we choose it? It's a matter of whether, if we, I think we feel that, how do we know that this is any better than what?
That's always a problem, cutting by both.
Absolutely.
No. There's exceptions to the end and that's exactly, I gotta take that by word.
And we have had cases where we've asked them to bring in materials. I believe Costco, they had, they brought in an example so you could touch and deal and see what it looked like in real life.
And I, you know, the metal, you know, that metal, you showed it to me earlier, but I haven't.
All right.
My understanding of when we should make some kind of a variance is when there is a really compelling reason, not just because it is the preference of the person, of the applicant. What I'm hearing is that this is the preference of the applicant. That is not a really compelling reason to violate, well, not violate, give variant to the standard that's there. I haven't heard that. There's certainly many architectural features of designs of buildings. This just doesn't seem to me to rise to that level of making an exception. That is a big exception. It's not, again, just a couple percentages because that's what would finish something off. So I'm really not persuaded. Maybe there could be some other arguments they bring that would persuade me. So far, I haven't heard them.
And the argument is given, it's discretion.
Correct.
So that's what I'm asking. But I, I struggle, you know, not knowing what this feature does and what its durability is with the channel and the sure features. And that, I, you know, it's, it's not, I, it gives me more power than I'm.
You can surely ask them to come back to the meeting and address those issues.
May I speak? I, I might just say, if you were to say either come back to seventy percent or come back to the planning commission again, they might be able to make some adjustments to seventy percent. We do have requirements to review the site plan here, so I'd hate that if they could meet that seventy percent to not be able to issue a permit for them. You know, so if they, if they change out some of the metal to get to that seventy percent requirement after that is approval. So I hate to put words in your mouth, but if that's the direction you're heading.
I like those words.
Well, you know, you could table it, but if then they meet the seventy percent, we just cuss them a month, which is fine. It's not the end of the world, but if they can't meet that seventy percent, are you okay with the style of the building and the site plan and everything else on it? So we kind of separate that as the issue. Because I completely agree with Commissioner Labonte, we've gone through this for as long as I can remember and we've not changed ordinance yet because it is sort of complex. It's hard to, we've focused in on this and come up with a good resolution, so that's why you have that discretion. But obviously you feel uncomfortable with the amount that they're under.
Some of us do.
Yeah, so.
If I hear you correctly, that you're suggesting we could approve it on condition that they could do it.
That they meet the seventy percent.
That they meet the standard.
If they don't, then they come back to you next month with some, you know, here's our, here's our material, what do you think of it? There are more information on why this material is better, you know. So, potential motion.
So move. Second.
All right, someone's gonna have to verbalize that. What he said.
Um, move to approve the site plan provided they can be consistent with the current ordinance with the percentages of materials.
Meet the seventy percent or require them to come back. And you seconded that. All right, is there any other questions or discussion points anybody wishes to raise before we go to vote? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Um, yeah, I love signs and architectural details. All right, site, oh, good. Site plan review for addition in conditional overlay. Aye, district at four seventy-one, Christianson Drive, Magnum Electric.
Thank you. This property is located within the corridor, Interstate Corridor Overlay District which requires all developments to be subject to site and building plan review and approval by the planning and zoning and city commission. Higher construction standards is required in the Interstate Corridor Overlay District. Any exposed metal fiberglass on all buildings shall be limited to no more than thirty percent of any wall which fronts on public streets provided it is coordinated into the architectural design. Initial drawings of the building additions show that it will be constructed completely of precast concrete, brick, and glass which will exceed our standard. Submitted site plan shows a one-story, nine thousand two hundred and thirty-four square foot building and office addition with thirteen new parking spaces to the north. Setbacks for the buildings are more than adequate for the Interstate Corridor Overlay District. Landscaping is more than adequate and was when the original permit was approved. The submitted information shows that city plans and development requirements can be met. Staff's recommendation is to approve the site and elevation plans submitted to the city commission with the condition that all provisions of the West Fargo city ordinances are met to ensure sufficient review is provided for building inspections and other city departments. Here is the site plan. And here is, here is the addition, proposed addition to the existing building here. I'm not seeing a metal.
We don't. So it exceeds all the requirements in the conditional overlay, or the corridor overlay.
Interstate corridor overlay district, correct.
And this is not a public hearing.
This is not a public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Questions, comments, concerns?
I think it looks good. I think they actually upgraded the look of the facility. Drive by the knowledge, it's like a warehouse. Sliding that blue, the blue. And more glass makes it look more like an office building.
Do we hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Been moved and seconded to approve? Are there any other questions, discussion points, concerns, prior to going to vote?
This isn't the same spot that used to have the issue with the river cave in or wherever they were.
I have no...
I mean, you save a moment, I just got different location. So this law, the version of Calhoun Street.
Any other questions? Okay, now we go to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same thing. Motion passed. Non-agenda, do we have any non-agenda items?
Thank you. Thank you. We do have one non-agenda item for you, and as an update, we are currently working with placemakers to take a look at the sign code, and so they've just begun taking a look at that, and we hope to have some information for your commission soon on what that process may look like.
Did you say we're gonna be looking at these sign codes?
Correct.
All right, so anyway... Any other non-agenda items? Do I hear a second? Been moved and seconded to adjourn, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same thing. Meeting adjourned. You know, you made me have a...